Everybody, I'd like to call to order this meeting. This is the business meeting for the Borough Council of Gettysburg for Monday, May 12, 2025. Before we begin tonight, I'd ask that you all join me as we always start our meetings with a moment of silence and a pledge to the flag. Thank you, everybody. I'm going to apologize in advance for my liberal use of cough drops tonight. I'm getting over a nasty cold. We have a larger crowd than usual. Please do make sure you've signed in, particularly if you intend to speak tonight. Our first order of business tonight is to approve tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the May 12, 2025 agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we did have a late submission today. The mayor presented us with Chief Glenny's resignation letter. This is considered a somewhat large change to the agenda, so we are allowed to make last-minute changes like this. As it appears, the chief's first day at his new municipality will be June 9, which is the same day as our next meeting. I think it behooves us to vote on whether or not to accept that resignation tonight so that he can start with his new job with a clean slate. Would anybody care to make a motion to approve this agenda as amended with a motion to approve the resignation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I would take a motion to approve minutes of the council meeting of April 14, 2025, and the council work session of April 28, 2025, as presented.
So moved.
So there's, we have a motion and a second, Mrs. Lawson and then Mr. Carr. Is there any discussion, omissions, corrections? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I'd now like to turn the floor over to Mayor Freeling and Chief Glenny for a special presentation, an event we don't get to do too frequently, but sometimes we do it with a heavy heart and then we get to say goodbye to one of our own.
Dennis, would you like to join us? Do you want to bring your wife with you? Come on, Nancy. Office of the Mayor proclamation, whereas Dennis Beevenhour began his service to the borough on September 1, 2008, as a patrol officer. Dennis moved up through the ranks of the Gettysburg Police Department, serving as detective, master patrol officer, and intelligence officer. Dennis retired from service on February 24, 2025. Whereas in addition to his assigned duties, Dennis served as a project coordinator for multiple projects dealing with the operations and administration of the Gettysburg Police Department. And whereas Dennis gained the admiration of his officers, mayors, and borough staff for his knowledge and devotion to the borough as a member of the Gettysburg Police Department, whereas he's completed more than 16 years of service to the Gettysburg Police Department, therefore, I, Rita C. Freeling, Mayor, do congratulate Dennis "Beeve" Crockett on the completion of his tenure and call upon his peers and associates to thank him for a job well done and to wish him success in all of his future endeavors. Given under my hand and the seal of the Borough of Gettysburg this 12th day of May, 2025, congratulations, Dennis.
So generally, at this time, we present a shadow box, but that hasn't arrived yet. So Dennis knows he's getting it. I would like to take this occasion to knock the mayor over and just let everyone know, I had the privilege of attending a small ceremony on the square on, I think it was Saturday, May 3. Congressman Joyce recognized Dennis for his service, and I would like to just read what Congressman Joyce read into the Congressional Record, which my understanding will be a permanent part of the 119th Congress Record in the National Archive in Washington, D.C. And this is Congressman Joyce talking. "Mr. Speaker, I rise today to honor Gettysburg Borough Master Patrol Officer Dennis P. Beevenhour, who retired after serving the community with distinction for over 16 years. Officer Beevenhour joined the Gettysburg Police Department as a patrolman in September 2008, as promoted to criminal investigator, intelligence officer, and master patrol officer. He entered law enforcement after a 27-year career in the United States Air Force. His impressive record of public service also includes roles as a volunteer firefighter and probation and parole officer. Officer Beevenhour was widely respected by colleagues and supervisors for his expertise in criminal investigations. He was instrumental in securing grant funding to enhance the security of the borough building and to upgrade the police department's record management system. Throughout the borough of Gettysburg and beyond, Officer Beevenhour's legacy of dedication, professionalism, and community service will be forever respected and appreciated. On behalf of everyone in Pennsylvania's 13th Congressional District, I express gratitude to Officer Beevenhour for extraordinary record of military and public service and offer fond wishes for joy and contentment in retirement. Thank you, I yield." So I was very impressed that Congressman Joyce did that. He also presented to Dennis a flag which was flown over to Capitol Building at the same time. So Beeve, you will be sorely missed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Speech?
Uh-huh. I'm good.
Thank you, Dennis. One other announcement on a somewhat sadder note. We found out today, three days ago, a former employee of the borough, Wayne Schutz, passed away. He had been a full-time custodian here for the borough for 10 years until he retired in 2001. So on behalf of the borough, I'd like to offer our condolences to his family and thank them for his service here to the borough as well. All right, last announcement. An executive session will be conducted by the Borough Council immediately following the adjournment of this evening's monthly general business meeting of the council, consistent with Sections 708A1 and 708A5 of the Sunshine Act for the following purposes. One, to provide information and to discuss matters involving the employment, the terms and conditions of employment, and the evaluation and performance of current borough employees. And two, to review and discuss matters of borough business which have conducted in public could lead to the disclosure of information or matters of confidentiality protected by law. I believe at this point in the evening, Mr. Manager Gable would like to make a statement.
Good evening. Most everyone here tonight knows me and my position with Gettysburg Borough. For those watching at home who may not know me, I'm the manager here in Gettysburg. I hold a master's degree in public administration from Penn State University and have served in my current capacity as borough manager since 2014. Since my hiring, I have worked hard to serve the borough with dedication and commitment to the best of my ability. I have no criminal record, nor have I committed any serious traffic offenses. My driver's license has never been suspended or revoked. Although this is a private matter, having occurred outside the scope of my position as borough manager, I do recognize that as a public official, the public has a right to know about the incident and my approach to resolving it. The purpose of this statement is to minimize any distraction to borough business due to charges of DUI having been recently filed against me. All services provided by your local government continue unimpeded. To my colleagues on the Borough Council, I sincerely apologize for the distraction this has brought the borough. It is an honor to work with each of you every day, and I regret deeply letting you down. To my dedicated borough staff, I have the privilege of working with you each and every day, and I have failed you. I pledge to do what I can do, everything I can do, anything I can do, to restore your confidence in me. And to the residents of Gettysburg Borough, whether we work closely together or we only know each other in passing, I regret breaking the sacred trust vital to good governance, and I recommit myself to restoring that trust. On May 3, at approximately 1:00 a.m., I was pulled over by a Pennsylvania state trooper here in Gettysburg for having a partially obscured registered license plate that could not be viewed at a reasonable distance. I am grateful there were no accidents, no injuries, nor any property damage of any kind. Upon respectful conversation and interaction with the trooper, he detected an odor of alcohol on my breath, and I provided a preliminary breath sample that indicated my blood alcohol content to be .092 percent, the legal limit being in Pennsylvania, .08 percent. DUI charges were subsequently filed against me on May 6. I accept full responsibility for my actions, and I will cooperate fully with the court system and the district attorney's office. I have already waived my preliminary hearing, and I have applied to the Adams County ARD DUI program. I will comply with all terms and conditions of ARD if I'm accepted into the program. To that end, I will move to resolve this matter as quickly as possible. I will have no further comment regarding this matter, and I do appreciate both the grace and space that this Borough Council is affording me as I continue to work through this personal matter. Thank you.
All right, so that takes us to our first public comment section of the evening. This first section is restricted to items appearing on tonight's agenda. We ask that you use the podium. Please state your name and address of residence. Please limit yourself to five minutes.
Hello, good evening. My name is Katie Daughter. This is my first-ever council meeting, so I'm excited to be here, but also bringing you a serious matter that we are experiencing on Hillcrest Place. So my address is 526 Hillcrest Place, right here in Gettysburg. I got to walk here today. You have on the agenda, I believe it's Part B, to authorize a proposed ordinance for the purpose of designating my street, Hillcrest Place, as a residential parking permit street, consistent with the borough regulations. And I just, if you're not aware, ever since the, our residential street is experiencing significant parking issues due to the recent implementation of paid parking at the Lincoln Elementary and Gettysburg Middle School parking lots located directly below our street, and it is actually affecting Hillcrest and Locust Avenue. And so as a direct result, tourists and visitors are now using our street as free parking, making it virtually impossible for residents to find parking near their homes, especially on the weekends. We don't usually have a problem during the week, but it's becoming more and more as tourist season is upon us, as we know. There's been many nights that I've come home and I haven't been able to find parking on my own street. Just two points that I want to point out as you vote on this, which, by the way, thank you for putting on the agenda so quickly. We really appreciate that. I think some of our houses can be deceiving, mine in particular. So I have an apartment in a house. It looks like a regular house, but there's four units, and there are six of us tenants, and there are six vehicles at all times that need a place to park. And not every house has a driveway. And I think more of the concerning part for me, too, is there are a lot of elderly people on my street, and it's making it very hard for them, especially either elderly or disabled people. They can't walk very long distances. So when I went out, I have a petition here, signed for you all, from all the residents on my street, which gave me an awesome opportunity to meet my neighbors, but I didn't even have to explain half of it, and they're like, where do I sign? Because we're all very frustrated with this situation. So they're really excited that it's even on the agenda tonight. So thank you for taking this into consideration, and if you have any questions, please let me know, and thank you for having me.
Thank you. Public comment. Good night, Dennis. Good night, Nancy. It was good to meet you.
Dennis.
Thank you, Dennis.
Any public comment? All right, seeing none, we will move on. We'll start tonight, current and old business, with John Whitmore in the Planning Department.
Good evening. Just to hit the high points of the report, the zoning ordinance planning commission draft has been finalized effective May 5. That will be discussed at the May 26, ooh, May 26, Council Workshop, no, it was 27, Council Workshop meeting. Gettysburg Station, we should be having some additional conversation with the Planning Commission just regarding the general application, specifically having engineering comments and some review of comments received to date. So that review is continuing. Additionally, the zoning hearing board will be having a case regarding a convenience store special exception. That'll be at the end of the month as well. Other than that, the motion on the tonight's agenda relates to the code enforcement ticketing ordinance that we discussed at the last workshop, but we can answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Whitmore? Would anybody care to make his motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the Director of Code Enforcement, the Code Compliance Officer, and the Solicitor to prepare and finalize a proposed ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Code of Ordinances of the Borough of Gettysburg for the purposes of implementing quality-of-life enforcement provisions relative to code enforcement ordinance violations.
Second.
Second.
I heard Mr. Bales is the second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Any last-minute questions for Mr. Whitmore before we move on? Thank you, sir. That takes us to Mrs. English.
Thank you. My report is in your folder. I did want to remind everyone that we're doing a shred event on Friday, the 16th, for borough residents and non-residents. It is $4 a box per non-resident if you wish to come to that event on Friday. Saturday is our East Cycle event, and that is for borough residents only. You can sign up through me, email me, or check our website. There's recycling tab, and you can, all the information and contact information is there. Other than that, I have several motions on the agenda from Harb, and if you have any other questions.
Any questions for Ms. English?
Can you just repeat those dates one more time, the recycling?
Sure. Friday, the 16th, is the shred event, and I believe it's from 9:00 to 10:30, and then the East Cycle.
And that's here at?
Yes, the DPW office at 439. 457, sorry.
At the DTW, right. At Public Works Building.
Middle Street. And then Saturday, the 17th, the East Cycle event is, I believe, 9:00 to 11:00.
Same place.
Same place. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, would anybody care to read that motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Borough of Gettysburg Historic Architectural Review Board, Harb, following its review during a public meeting on April 16, 2025, and to approve the grants and certificates of appropriateness for the following applications as presented. COA-250012, major project 64 West Middle Street, Amy and Jody Ricard Trust for the repair and replacement of exterior features due to fire damage, provided the removal of five or six west-side windows would be replaced with a window style agreeable to both the applicant and the board as presented in the application scope dated February 25, 2025. COA-250021, major project 639 South Washington Street, Ryan and Amy Barnes for the construction of a new 22-foot by 40-foot garage with board and baton siding in a dark color way as presented in the application dated March 25, 2025. COA-250013, major project 322 Baltimore Street, Rod Simpson for the demolition of a rear 20-foot by 20-foot accessory block garage. COA-250014, major project 117 Breckinridge Street, Michael Brazda for the replacement of 14 windows, pending applicant confirmation that those windows are two-over-two windows with external simulated divided light grids. 20, major project 120 North Stratton Street, Charles Huber for the construction of a new 16-foot by 22-foot enclosed green porch over an existing deck using materials outlined in the present scope as presented in the application dated March 24, 2025. Thereon by Harb, as set forth in its April 16, 2025, meeting minutes, and the same are hereby adopted by the Borough Council.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Any last-minute questions for Ms. English? All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
That takes us to Ms. Fissell in the Parking Department.
Good evening. I did provide my report. It has all the comparisons from last year to this year for the tickets, the permits. There were 33 LPPs in April and 17 quarterly, so that is very popular right now. It probably will drop slightly when the college kids leave, but then it'll, back in August, they generally buy more. There are 10 people that have the reserved spaces in the parking garage in April. That has also grown in May, and then sometimes it drops off in the summer, but that's pretty normal. And then I have my graphs and charts. And other than the motions, that's all I have.
All right, any questions for Ms. Fissell? Anybody care to make her motions?
I'll make that first motion to authorize the Solicitor to prepare a proposed ordinance for the purpose of designated Hillcrest Place as a residential parking permit street, consistent with the borough regulations for the residential parking permit system as set forth in Chapter 15, Part 10 of the Code of Ordinances of the Borough of Gettysburg.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Come back for more Borough Council meetings. Would anybody care to make the second motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the Solicitor to prepare a proposed ordinance for the purposes of designating an area on York Street at or near its intersection with Liberty Street within a 12-hour limit-metered parking zone and removing such area from a 2-hour limit-metered parking zone.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. And the last parking motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the Solicitor to prepare a proposed ordinance for the purpose of removing a metered individual parking space on the east side of Baltimore Street and adjacent to real property located at street address 304 Baltimore Street due to a public safety, due to public safety concerns.
Second.
Pick one.
We have a lot to cover tonight.
Maybe seven seconds there, if you pick one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Any last-minute questions from Ms. Fissell?
I did have one, just one question. We had a lot of visitors here this past weekend for the Gettysburg Film Festival, and I wanted, I know I reached out to you. Were there problems with any of the kiosks in the parking garage, or, I know you looked into it.
I'm not showing anything. On occasion, people will call and say they're down. It could be the cell service real fast. We did upgrade, they were all on AT&amp;T originally, and we were having some issues. We've upgraded all three of them to Verizon, and just, the last one was just a week and a half ago. And I can look at them in real time. I get alerts when they go down, and I did not see anything.
Okay, thank you.
I think there was lines and, you know, so, but that's pretty normal when there's an event.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, ma'am. That takes us to Mr. Harbaugh in the Public Works Department.
Good evening. I hope you all got a chance to read my submitted report. Some highlights on my report. The Shade Tree Commission started a planning project out at the Rec Park today with us in memory of Jane Scott, which Jane was a longtime member of the Shade Tree Commission, and they purchased the trees with the donation money from her passing. So that project was completed today. The Garden Club will be, since they put the new topsoil in the square, they will be coming in Tuesday, the 20th, and doing their spring planting, and hopefully have the baskets put up in the following week. Spring brush collection. Spring brush is slated for next week, the 19th through the 23rd. We will be around twice that week, collecting brush only. Please place the brush on top of the curb, not in the street, or along the edge of the alley, if you have an alley behind your house, and we will be around to collect the brush. Last thing is our, our street sweeper. We started our spring sweeping program, and in the middle of last month, which we did not get this project completed yet, we were experiencing some murder issues with our street sweeper, which caused us to do some diagnosis with John Deere and their software, and it wasn't good. We kept, kept doing diagnosis, changing out parts, till the engineers from John Deere actually got on with our John Deere dealer, and they were asking us to open up the top of the murder. of the motor. When they opened up the top of the motor, they found a lot of issues internally with the motor. The problem we were experiencing was a loss of power in which we could not operate our sweeper to full capacity to be able to suck up the material off the street. So, there's, there's some cylinder problems, push rod issues, and they recommended we tear down the motor and rebuild it. Well, doing some, doing some checking with labor and cost, parts cost, it's worth our while to put in, drop in a remand motor than to spend the time to rebuild our old motor completely, due to labor, mostly labor, seventy-five percent of its labor, twenty-five percent parts. Brand-new sweeper costs two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars, and we normally, in the past few years, we have replaced our sweeper every ten years. The sweeper we have currently is twenty-sixteen. So, that's where we're at with that. Any questions?
No. Charles, can you speak to what budget we would be paying for this repair on?
Well, we would have options. Honestly, if we did not have the surplus in the general fund, we could pull out of the Capital Reserve. We have several million dollars in Capital Reserve that honestly are earmarked for other larger projects, but that's the purpose of having a reserve fund. But by the time this bill comes due, if, if there is ample funds in the general operating fund, it would be my recommendation to pay that out of current money and reserve, the Capital Reserve funds for our Baltimore Street project and other large things.
Right. And if we were to opt to buy a new truck, what would the delivery window on that be, Robbie?
A year and a half at least.
Right. Yeah. See that we have any choice but to fix this and get it back in service.
I mean, we, we should be able to make this, like I said, we normally, in ten years, we're normally looking at another one, but we should be able to get another five to six years out of this one.
Yeah. All right. Well, unfortunate, but thank you for that report. Any questions for Mr. Harbaugh?
How, you said two-hundred-and-sixty for a new?
Two-hundred-and-eighty.
Two-hundred-and-eighty for a new one?
Yes.
And how much to rebuild?
And that's ballparking it.
Okay. And then how much to rebuild?
To rebuild the motor?
Yeah.
And drop a new one in? Not to rebuild the motor. Rebuild the motor was like fifty-two thousand. Remand motor is thirty-eight.
Okay. And that's your, your, do you think it's worth getting another heavy equipment mechanic as like a second opinion, or do you trust the opinions you got?
I, I trust the opinion of John Deere. We've dealt with them for years, before my time, and we have a good reputation with them. They wouldn't steer us wrong. They even got the engineers from Mountain, Iowa involved, from John Deere.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Just a comment. This is obviously something I think that our town really appreciates seeing. I know I've heard it from constituents when we see the street sweepers. If we didn't have this equipment ourselves, we would be looking at outsourcing that from another company, which I imagine is a lot more expensive than owning our own equipment. Thank you.
I do have a question for, for Mr. Harbaugh. Is, is this the type of equipment, I mean, I know we, you know, we're looking at, you know, eighteen months if we were to order a new one, and the rebuilt sounds like the way you're recommending that we go, but in terms of purchasing large equipment like this in the future, is this something that we could consider, you know, going in in terms of economy of scale and sharing with another municipality, a neighboring municipality for pieces of equipment like this, or is it just so heavily used that it would not make sense?
It could possibly make sense. I don't know what the reception from the townships would be, but I know we use it every week, and it, it's a wear and tear item. I mean, it, you know, when you're, when it's running along the street, it, it uses a lot of wear and tear.
A lot of moving parts.
But the motor, the motor we just had, and, and most of the problems is the emissions on this motor. That's most of the problems.
Okay. Thanks.
I have a comment. Thank you for mentioning brush. Would you please again confirm brush, leaves are not brush and should not be mixed in with the brush?
That is correct. It's brush-only. Limbs, sticks, shrubs, stuff like that. No, no leaves.
Do you remember when we started this, how much dialogue went on about what is a twig?
Yeah.
And people were going out measuring twigs. Those were the good old days.
Yeah. Well, just to go a little further with that, so, anything over eight feet would need to be cut, because our, our backhoe bucket is eight feet wide, so.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
All right. That takes us to Mr. Claybaum.
Good evening, council. You have a copy of my written report. I do have a couple of updates for you. I did provide an update on the CDBG curb ramps removed along with that project. Our survey is complete. We're starting the design. I'll be coming to you within the next couple of months, looking to advertise for, for construction bids on that. Give you an update on the channel wall assessment. The next step there is we're applying for a grant application. We did get the Stormwater Authority's buy-in for that, so we're going to be applying for a grant application to, it's the PA Flood Mitigation Program. It funds up to five-hundred thousand, but first we need to do design, which is going to be in the fifty-to-one-hundred-thousand-dollar range, so it'll be a small part for this first, first round, and then once we get the design done, we can move into the second phases. So, that project continues. I'll give you an update on the Gateway Connectivity Project. We did have some, some public engagement scoping meetings. I thought they were very well attended, very good feedback. I don't want to get too far into the weeds with that tonight. We are going to be giving you some more input on that at your workshop meeting in a couple of weeks, unless you want to have any questions about it. I gave you an update on the Gettysburg Interloop Phase B-two project. Of course, there's a motion on your agenda tonight for this first, third phase. The first phase, as we know, is done. The second phase is the CDBG. Kinsley continues to do construction out there. It's going pretty much as planned. There's a couple of minor changes, a couple more things that were eliminated than were added, so we're actually a little bit below budget right on schedule for that, so all good news with that phase of the project. And then the third phase is to use your CDB, or I'm sorry, your C-two-P-two grant money that we got from DCNR. As a reminder, that grant amount is two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars, so your motion on your agenda, and you do have my recommendation to award to Kinsley, they were the low bidder for that next phase. Let me just pull that bid tabulation here. So, so Kinsley was the low bidder. There was, their, their bid was at three-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars and zero cents. Now, it is a little bit higher than our estimate on that. It was about fourteen percent higher than our estimate, but with the rest of this project, which was closer to twenty percent for the other phases, that's not too bad. The good news here is that there were two other bids. As you know, the, the second phase there, we only got one bid, and we had to rebid the thing, and that's what partially drove up the prices. But in this, this time, we did get three other bids, I'm sorry, two other bids for a total of three. The second low bid, there was three-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, and the third bid was four-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, so Kinsley's bid at three-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand's still pretty good compared to the other bids that we got. And it's nice that Kinsley's currently working on this phase of the project. This third and final phase is this continuation of the exact same work. We just had to break it out separately because of the grant funding, so. Most of that pro, most of that three-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, or two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand of it exactly, will be paid for out of the C-two-P-two grant. So, that is the update on that, and then I did provide a quick update on the Gettysburg Station project. As John said, we are currently working on the review. That will be discussed at the next Planning Commission meeting. One other thing to add some flavor to that is, I don't anticipate, actually, I'm almost sure that this will not be a once-and-done at the Planning Commission. In fact, I won't be surprised if this, if we're not still talking about this in four or five, six months from now. Projects of this magnitude still have outside agency reviews. There's an MPDS permit, that's an ENS, the Erosion Control Permit through the County Conservation District. There's PENDOT, Traffic Impact Studies being reviewed, so it's going to go through GMA's review process, so we're going to be looking at this for several months to come. This, for, this next Planning Commission meeting will just be the first of those meetings. So, that is all I have, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Claybaum? All right. Would anybody care to make his motion?
I'll make a motion to award the North Washington Street Sidewalk and Paving Improvements, Gettysburg Interloop Phase B-two, DCNR Construction Contract, to the lowest qualified responsive and responsible bidder, Kinsley Construction Incorporated, at their amount of three-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars, as recommended by the Borough Engineer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Any questions for the Borough Engineer before we move on? All right. Thank you. That takes us to Chief Glenny. Good evening, chief.
Good evening. Yeah, my report. Be happy to answer any questions on it. I did want to update council on, we had a, myself and Chief Bumgardner from Conawago Township, and Sergeant Pruey had a meeting with Wellspan Mental Health Services and MHIDD for York, Mental Health and Intellectual Disabilities Department for York and Adams County, and they have some, some really good and news as far as mental health treatment and a plan for moving forward with mental health treatment in the county. They are looking at, they significantly advanced their mobile crisis portion through Wellspan, and they are looking to add, right here in Gettysburg, a walk-in center, a walk-in treatment center, which is phenomenal for, for mental health treatment, to give some folks that are having some issues the opportunity to walk in. I've, I've only experienced one of those before. That was in Johnstown many, many years ago, when I went through CIT training, and it's incredibly productive for some, for some of these folks that are having these issues, so I was excited to hear about that. So, they have a, they have a plan in place, and they're moving forward with that plan, and it, it was a good meeting. It was, Chief Bumgardner and I were representatives of the Adams County Chiefs, and of course, Sergeant Pruey was here for us, so, you know, we may be getting a walk-in center somewhere here in the borough in the relatively not-too-distant future, which is, is good news from a mental health, on the mental health treatment front.
That's phenomenal.
There's a couple of numbers on here, a little concerning to me, that ticked up a little bit. I mean, you think two crashes isn't a big deal, but two crash tick up when you go from fifteen to seventeen. That's, we'll have to watch that, and our domestics are, are starting to tick back up again. Other than that, it was a relatively, I won't say slow, but uneventful month for, for April. We had a lot of officers use vacation, so there was a lot of fill time, and, but it was, in the greater scheme of things, relatively uneventful for, for April. We did have our drug take-back. I don't know what our totals are, and I don't want to rain on Mr. Moon's parade. He may know those totals, so. It seems that I've been raining on his parade some when it comes to mental health stuff lately, so. But, and then we have the, the two motions on the agenda tonight, and I'd like to point out that Zachary Saadi, the candidate identified in the second motion there, is, is in the, in the room tonight, in the back. Zach, stand up. Take a bow. This is our potential candidate that we voted on tonight. And again, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, it's funny you mentioned the medicine take-back. I was just about to bring that up. This is the second one in a row where we're standing there. This time, it was in the rain, which was fun. And minding our own business, having a grand old time, and bam, we hear a collision right there at Stratton and Middle Street. It's two in a row. So, I did want to say, today, driving through there around three-thirty, I did notice your officers patrolling that intersection, as we had discussed, and I just wanted to say thank you for paying a little more attention there. It's a place where people tend to be a little reckless, and I appreciate you putting some resources there. Any questions for the chief? Questions about his report?
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Because this could be your last meeting, and with a heavy heart and a lot of sadness. It's going to be very sorry to see you go, and a lot of good memories. But I'd like to share one memory. It was the night you were sworn in, and we voted you in, and your dad and mom were here. And your dad's an old corrections officer, retired from Huntington, and he just had tears coming down his face. He was so proud of you. And I'm proud of you, too. I think you've been a net positive for the borough. I think you modernized operations, increased the training. For the events, of course, in these times, added security. I think morale's increased. No lawsuits. I'm just going to keep it positive. You know, there's a lot of things I'm frustrated with, but, buddy, I'm going to miss you.
Thank you.
And thank you so much. I'm proud of your service. Public safety is your passion. I think people don't know how fair of a man that you are, and how good a leader you are, so I appreciate you, and I wish you all the best. I love you, man.
Thank you.
Chris, I agree with what you say. It's been a pleasure and a learning-
Hold your belt, don't make me cry.
It's been a pleasure and a learning experience, and I've worked with small law enforcement groups before. You, that was in domestic relations. It was not good, because I know it's good and not. Very, very wonderful working with you, and people think that you and I agree on everything. You haven't been behind the closed doors when the yelling is going on, but we come to a consensus, and I just really appreciate your thirty-five-plus years of experience that I could rely on, and it made it very easy for me to work with the Police Department, and the quality of your officers is really wonderful. So, you're only moving to Mechanicsburg, so if you see me outside your office, then you won't be crying. Get out of here. But anyway, here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right.
Matt, I would like to say something.
Please.
I know we haven't gotten to work together for too long, chief, but I would like to echo the statements from my colleagues and say thank you for your service, and thank you for putting public safety first. I respect that, and I hope that you can continue to be a resource to our officers here and to us and to Gettysburg, and in that transition, and hopefully afterwards as well, because your experience is something to be proud of, and so I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right. Would anybody care to make the first motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the eligibility list of candidates for the open position of entry-level patrol officer and police cadet as certified to and submitted to the Borough Council by the Civil Service Commission of the Borough of Gettysburg. The Borough Council does not object to the candidate certified to by the Civil Service Commission on its eligibility list submitted to the council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. The second motion.
I'll make a motion to make an offer of conditional appointment to Zachary Saadi as the first-ranked candidate of the, on the eligibility list, as certified to and submitted to the Borough Council by the Civil Service Commission of the Borough of Gettysburg for an open position- an open position of entry-level patrol officer and police cadet with the Gettysburg Borough Police Department. Said conditional appointment of an entry-level patrol officer shall become effective on June 30, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to make one comment. I researched you, sir, and you are a military vet. I thank you for your service in advance and for the future service that you're about to have.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Welcome aboard, Mr. Saadi. Thanks for taking this trip with us. All right. So then we need a motion to accept the chief's resignation. So Chief, I noticed on the letter submitted, you had a effective end date of June 27th, though your first day on your new job is June 9th. We discussed this with our labor attorneys today. We think it makes sense for your terminal date to be June 8th, so that there is the clean break in employment for the new employer. We, of course, will pay out any accrued and unused time, which is what I thought maybe the dates were trying to-
The dates were trying to make it so that I would be in the office some to, to, I won't say oversee, but to make sure the transition occurs smoothly however council decides to do it. And I was planning on, and I got this approved through my potential new employer, was to, to assist Gettysburg in any way that I can moving forward to make sure that transition is smooth, make sure morale stays up-
Understood.
-for cognitive operations is, is carried out.
There's some consistency.
Yeah.
No, I do understand that approach. We did speak with our attorneys at Campbell Durant today, though, and they did recommend the, the clean break the day before you start your new employment. So I'm going to read a, a motion. If anybody would care to say so moved, we'll consider that the motion. If nobody wants to pick this one up as it's written, we can continue to discuss. This was prepared for us today by Solicitor Eastman. This is a motion to accept the resignation of Robert W. Glennie Jr. from the Borough's administrative appoint of office of Chief of Police effective on June 8, 2025, day prior to commencement of his duties of his new position as the Chief of Police of Mechanicsburg Borough, Cumberland County, Pennsylvania. Chief Glennie shall be compensated for any accrued but unused and unpaid leave days, such as vacation time, as required pursuant to the terms and conditions of his employment agreement with the borough dated January 14, 2019. Would anybody care to make that motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Chief, would it be too much of a stretch if we picked up the phone to ask you some questions? You might answer those for us beyond that date.
Well, I will, I will not let the police department fall, so.
I didn't think you would. Is there any, any further discussion?
I'd like to say something. I'm a firm believer, as I felt with Mrs. Vivenar when we were hearing of his service before. Please convey to your wife our thanks for her support of our recycling efforts, among other things, and her support of you. But tell her we appreciate her service, if you will, as well. Please do.
Thank you.
I shed my tears with you in your office, many told me, so I won't do that here. But I will share with the public. The, the list of topics that Rob Glennie and I can disagree on is large enough to fill the Grand Canyon. But I've said this many times to my colleagues here on council. This is a man who I would trust with my children. This is a man I would trust to call when I really needed him. I wish you the best. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Any last-minute questions for the chief before we move on? All right. Thank you, sir. Office of the Manager and Treasurer, Ms. Stahl.
Okay. Our office is very busy. We're working on another pension audit for the Auditor General, so that's an important one that we need to get done. And then I'll just give a shout-out to Becca Fissell, who celebrates her 10th anniversary this month. Congratulations. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Any questions for the secretary? All right, Manager Gable.
Just highlight a few financial things related to my monthly manager's report. The year-to-date numbers for the general fund, as always expected, in March begin to flip. So the borough is running a modest surplus as of March, typical for this time of year as we begin to collect spring taxes. In the general fund budget, or not budget, the general fund account, banking account, there is 1.06 million in reserves and just over 1.8 million in operating funds. And so we're, we're in good shape there. Earlier tonight, we were talking about Fund 30 with reference to how would we pay for repairs to the street sweeper. You can see there's 2.29 million dollars available in that fund. Many of those, a lot of those funds are earmarked or will be earmarked for grant match money if those grants that we are currently waiting on are awarded to the borough. I was going to do a little update on America 250 as it relates to the recreation of the Gettysburg address, but I see Wendy Allen is in the room, so I, if she is inclined to update us in public comment, I will defer those comments to Ms. Allen. Yeah, I know, but I don't know how much of that you want publicly discussed.
We've been, I'm not prepared, so I apologize. We've been working really hard, and things, again, are really moving along. I think the most exciting information is that we now have funding for a feasibility proposal for the rail coming in, bringing Lincoln in. And that's going to be really exciting. I think that's going to be a very exciting part of this whole event. So we're really happy about that. Let's see, I was working on it all day today, in and out.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
That's all right. Let's see. Oh, I was, we're going to be doing some major fundraising, obviously. And so you'll start to hear dribs and drabs of that leaking out. Some really fun, exciting ways to raise some money to support this effort, because we're still a year and a half out. So I think we're going to give ourselves plenty of time to, to get the event fully funded and very successful. And it's so great, I was working on my list of all the nonprofits that we're working with, Main Street, the borough, and the county commissioners, and Gettysburg College, the foundation, and HCAC up the street. Everybody's pitching in, so it's, it's a wonderful collaboration of nonprofits in this town to really close out a signature, with a signature event next year. So, Charles, is that, is that-
Perfect. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
That concludes the manager's report.
Any questions for the manager? All right. I take a motion to approve all bills and payrolls for the month as presented.
Second. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next motion, please.
I'll make a motion to appoint Elizabeth Meegan as a member of the Civil Service Commission of the Borough of Gettysburg for a term of six years, expiring in May 2031.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just want to thank Wes Hyzer, who was our former Borough Council President, served in this, on, on this commission, and is finishing his term this month. So I want to thank Wes publicly and welcome Elizabeth Meegan.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next motion, please.
I'll make a motion to authorize the execution and delivery of a proposed memorandum of agreement between the Borough of Gettysburg and the Pennsylvania State Historic Preservation Officer regarding the Gettysburg Welcome Center. Charles R. Gable, MPA, Borough Manager, and Sarah L. Stahl, Borough Secretary, are hereby authorized to sign, attest, execute, and deliver the proposed memorandum of agreement on behalf of the borough.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I heard Ms. Lawson first. All those, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the execution and delivery of a proposed agreement between the Borough of Gettysburg and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, regarding the procurement of federal grant funding and access to such federal funds for the development and construction of the Gettysburg Welcome Center. Charles R. Gable, MPA, Borough Manager, and Sarah L. Stahl, Borough Secretary, are hereby authorized to sign, attest, execute, and deliver the proposed funding agreement with HUD on behalf of the borough.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, please.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 051225-1, authorizing the disposition of certain identified records of various departments of the Borough of Gettysburg in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Records Act and the Municipal Records Manual, consistent with the borough's intention to follow the schedules and procedures for the disposition of records as set forth therein pursuant to Gettysburg Borough Council Resolution Number 021020-4, adopted by the Borough Council on February 10, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? For those at home who might be curious, we have a routine annual destruction of records that have aged past their mandatory retention age, and they have to be destroyed in accordance with state law. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, please.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 051225-2 for the purposes of supporting the Main Street Gettysburg Incorporated Vision Statement, its five-year action strategy plan as the current plan for the revitalization of the Old Getty Place neighborhood of the Borough of Gettysburg relative to the designated Elm Street program, its request for Main Street Matters program designation from the Department of Community and Economic Development of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, DCED, and the entry of, and the entry by the borough into a cooperation agreement with Main Street Gettysburg Incorporated for its services to implement the five-year action plan for the Elm Street program following the designation of the same by DCED.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, please.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 051225-3 for the purposes of supporting the Main Street Gettysburg, Inc. Vision Statement, its five-year action strategy plan as the current plan for the revitalization of the historic and central business districts of the Borough of Gettysburg relative to the designated Main Street program, its request for Main Street program designation from the Department of Community and Economic Development of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, DCED, and the entry by the borough into a cooperation agreement with Main Street Gettysburg, Inc. for its services to implement the five-year action plan for the Main Street program following designation of the same by DCED.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to make a comment. I think it's important for the public to understand, Main Street Gettysburg's, or Main Streets around the country came to light maybe 30 years ago, and they were really prevalent throughout the country, coast to coast, especially in small towns like Gettysburg. I had the pleasure of serving on the Main Street Gettysburg Board for about a dozen years and was chair over a three-year period during the 150th sesquicentennial anniversary. So I know how hard the folks in Main Street work. I want to particularly thank Jill Sellers and Charles Gable, the partnership that Main Street has with the borough. Main Street Gettysburg is really like the economic arm of the borough. We could not be getting the funds, receiving the funds from the grants that we get as, you know, our own status as a borough without an organization like, like Main Street Gettysburg. It's been a pleasure to watch Jill kind of weave her magic since she took over a number of years ago. And we are one of the few Main Streets standing in this country today. It's really quite a testament to our small town and to the work of people like Jill and Charles and others. Wendy has been involved with Main Street, I know, in the past, and many others in this community have kept it going. The late Ron Hanky, who was like a, just a big mentor to me when I served as chair. And, you know, it's really hats off to this community and to the leadership that's been provided, because we are still able to get funding. We're going after funding. We're continuing to go after grants. And we are really one of the few last ones standing, so congratulations. And it's really exciting what this whole strategic planning. Our borough engineer a little while ago talked about the gateway connectivity, and I, I attended both of those meetings in this room. I know Wendy Allen and Jill, a few other people were here, certainly Charles and a few other people. Many of my council members were here that second session, and it was a packed, packed room. And it was great to see people in the community who really want to work to helping the borough move forward in a really progressive way and strategic way, and some great ideas. We had, I know that Dave was there as well. We had, you know, residents and, and business leaders here, and, and it was wonderful. And you can do a lot when you all pull together. So that's what I just wanted to say about that. So thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And our last motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Judith Butterfield as a voting delegate for the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs Annual Conference to be held June 1 to 4, 2025.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, that takes us to our liaison reports, and we'll start with Main Street Gettysburg, Ms. Sellers.
Good evening, everyone. You have my report and just a few things to highlight of what Main Street has been up to as we're out and about. We announced earlier, but I'll say it again, because I really need the business public to know this. DCED awarded us with another $50,000 facade improvement grant. So I encourage businesses to contact us. This is an excellent opportunity to make an investment in your infrastructure and have someone help you pay for it. So that doesn't come around every year. So we got 50,000 last year, which resulted in about $480,000 of investment in the historic district overall. And so we're hoping to have some, some really remarkable returns this year for some improvement. So please recommend businesses to head our way. The designation resolutions that you read, my thanks to you. I've been working with DCED on these. I'm particularly excited about the Elm Street designation and what's, what is the direction that that is heading. So that, that's the one I'm going to do first. I think it's vital. We just finished the, the assessment report of the Old Getty Place neighborhood. We have a really tremendous plan that includes some projects as well as some cost estimates. It's a very detailed roadmap of how we can take a look at that neighborhood and make some improvements. And I see improvements in as, in as much as certainly some infrastructure improvements, talking about, you know, sidewalks like we always talk about, but really beautification things, but mostly an identity that we're looking at for that neighborhood. So it really can speak to its own history, speak to the residents that have lived there, you know, traditionally, and, and certainly represent the, the neighborhood that is there now. It, it's going to kind of cover the gambit for everything from those kinds of projects, as well as looking into opportunities through an Elm Street program that would help with homeownership programs and other things to really make that an established neighborhood that we can, that people can raise families and, and be connected to our downtown, make it a very walkable district. and, uh, and be connected to our downtown, make it a very walkable district, and, um, very excited about that. So thank you for your support on those resolutions. Um, the Baltimore Street meetings, um, I appreciate all the comments. Anyone that has any questions about the Baltimore Street project, please reach out to Main Street Gettysburg. If I don't know the answer, I'll certainly reach out to our team, which I think is tremendous. Um, but, um, if there's any questions, it's a huge project. It's been going on for 10 years, um, pretty much. So, uh, if you have questions, that's not a surprise that you have questions. I have questions, and we talk about this every day, so please reach out to us to, for clarifications. Uh, we've got two years to talk about this before we're really going anywhere, so. Gettysburg Welcome Center, so, um, and again, some of the motions you passed tonight were about the Gettysburg Welcome Center. Very exciting. We have congressional monies coming. That was what the HUD motion was for. We, uh, shout out to Congressman Joyce, who was our champion on that effort, 1.27 million dollars. We'll pay for that construction, so, um, to give you an idea of a timeline, we've been commuting, communicating with the neighbors so that, uh, we can keep them up to date. We're looking for, uh, demolition this summer. Um, we're going to Harb later this month. Uh, then we'll be looking at finishing the design plans for construction. Those will go to Harb. It'll go out to bid, and hopefully we will have a contract awarded by the fall, and we will break ground. The goal is to get this facility open for 2026, and I think we're finally on track to do that. So my thanks to the community for helping make this happen. I look forward to seeing everyone, uh, you know, at the events that we're gonna surround this, this special occasion with. Um, on behalf of the Steinware Business Improvement District, just wanted to update you. There's a lot going on there. Flower baskets have been put up. They're beautifying that for the season. Of course, we're talking about Christmas Festival, but they're also doing a big special thing for the Brass Band Festival in June, so watch for things, uh, that are gonna be happening there. We also had a special meeting for Christmas, so we have some other ideas for what we're gonna be doing for the Christmas festival. So I'm really excited about how the businesses on Steinware Avenue are coming together, and our next meeting is June 5th. And finally, comments from Main Street Gettysburg. First, my thanks and appreciation to the chief. So, I won't make you cry. No, can't do that. But, um, especially the support to the Christmas festival. It has grown and become, you know, a incredibly large event. Um, you and your team have always been, you know, at, at my disposal when I have a question, and it's, it's always been, um, it's something that we've been able to resolve, and I just appreciate that support, and it clearly is something that, uh, I'm sure you will pass on and we will continue to, to handle properly. So my thanks to you, and I wish you well. And Main Street Gettysburg, uh, to Ms. Lawson and, um, and the Borough Council, we have appreciated our longstanding professional relationship with this council. Main Street Gettysburg has been here since 1984, so this is year 41. Uh, yeah, long time. So, um, we also, um, also appreciate our relationship with the staff. So, uh, we have a tremendous relationship with the Borough staff from Public Works to Parking uh, for the festival and, and everything else that we do in between all of these programs, um, even with code enforcement, the things that we talk about. Uh, we have a very professional relationship, um, and we feel, uh, completely comfortable to, uh, to resolve problems and really have some, uh, some dynamic, uh, relationships with the staff. And I also have to say that I have complete confidence in the capable leadership of Manager Gable. So, uh, I have been around the world and back again. I've worked in seven states and three countries. I've seen government in many languages, and I will tell you, this, this local government is a blessing uh, for how it functions and its transparency. And, uh, I'm very glad to be in my, in my role, in the position that I'm in with Main Street Gettysburg, to be able to be a part of that. So, I thank you all. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Gera, Mr. Carr.
Gettysburg Area Recreational Authority Park, Rec Park. Um, sometimes I don't have a lot to say about this, but if you have, uh, been paying attention, we have a new director at the Rec Park, and he is hitting the ground running. Uh, if you haven't met Director, Director Al Moyer, or have never met Al Moyer before, you know, uh, he is a man that gets things done. Uh, I appreciate him and his leadership. Uh, Director Al Moyer recently met with Manager Gable regarding budgetary projections for the future. They're gonna be due, the Rec Park is gonna be doing, uh, a lot less outsourcing of services and attempting to do more themselves. Examples are mower, uh, mower and tractor maintenance, as well as custodial care of the sternor building. We, of course, have the farmer's market, uh, up and running at the Rec Park. Uh, I believe it's every Saturday, eight to one, and it has, um, been, uh, absolutely beautiful these last, uh, few weeks, uh, so I encourage everybody to go out there. Throughout the season, I think it goes all the way into October, we've got some great vendors out there at the Rec Park, um, and lots of opportunities for, uh, families to have, uh, a great time as well. They've got some kids' activities out there as well and live music. The Rec Park is also hosting a music festival on May 24th with six local bands. Um, they've applied to receive, uh, and received Small Games of Chance certificate to raise some additional funds, um, with, uh, raffles. Um, they're now utilizing their kitchen, uh, there at the Rec Park more to generate some revenue uh, by recruiting two shared kitchen agreements. Um, and they have, uh, developed, uh, Gettysburg ghosts will love this. They've, uh, are ghost hunters or people that are interested in that type of thing. Um, they have developed an agreement with the Paranormal Group, uh, for After Dark Investigations to do tours in the park. The Rec Park typically does not lead most events, but they, uh, have a very heavy hand in facilitating and ensuring, uh, that everything goes smoothly at any event that is there at the Rec Park. Uh, however, they do take leadership a role, if you did not know this, folks at home. They do take a leadership role with the New Memorial Day Weekend Music Festival, the July 4th fireworks and music, and the craft show around Christmas time. Um, just a listing, if you are not yet aware of all of the many things that this Rec Park, um, provides, uh, they, uh, or things that they, that occur there at the Rec Park. Many people will rent the Rec Park for several things. Um, Office of Aging, Happy, our Bicycle Club, Typical Life Corporation, Gettysburg Youth Soccer Club, Gettysburg Little League, Gettysburg Youth Football and Cheerleading, Lincoln Cemetery Board, karate classes, kennel club, military share program, soccer shots, that's two to five-year-olds for soccer, World Classrooms, Upper Adams Soccer, Adams County Farmer's Market, Gettysburg Church of the Brethren Community Dinner, District 14 Umpires Association, Yoga in the Park, Adams County Library Fun Fest, Heritage Fest, Girl Scouts of America Collaborating for Youth Summer Camps, July 4th Celebration, Memorial Day Weekend Music Festival, Kids on the Run, Focus Festivals, uh, such as Autism Awareness and After Dark Investigations. All that and more here at our local Gettysburg Rec Park. Um, so, uh, uh, thank you, uh, to everybody who supports the Rec Park, and if you would like to know more, Google Gettysburg Area Rec Park. They've got a website. Um, and I'm sure they would be happy to have volunteers and donations.
All right. GMA, Mr. Berger.
Uh, yeah, just a quick one tonight. Uh, the Interceptor Project Sewer Line, uh, completed work on Water Street, now on Constitution Avenue. It's running parallel with Stevens Run. There's also some work, um, uh, underneath the Tiber, the, there's Boring, um, on Racehorse Alley and in front of the Federal Point. So, we see a construction, have some closings with that. Uh, and, and our workshop, I, Mark is set to come the 27th, if that's... So he's gonna update on our, all of our projects then.
Great. Thank you. Um, Ms. Sellers already covered the Steinware bid. Mayor Freeling, anything for Ekben?
Our meeting was moved from, um, next week to later this week, so I will give you a report on what comes up at that meeting.
All right. Thank you. Mrs. Butterfield, anything from COG?
Uh, no.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Lawson, Happy?
Happy met last week. As Mr. Carr said, we do meet at the Rec Park each month. And Happy does partner with the Borough. A lot of the work that's being done on the Gettysburg Interloop, working with our engineer, um, Happy raises funds. And I, I will say, just a plug for that committee, it's not a large committee, it's healthy Adams Bicycle Pedestrian, um, group. It's a complete volunteer organization. Um, there is no staff, um, associated with it, so that leadership circulates around. They've raised quite a bit in terms of, um, money from, from grants as well as fundraising. This is the 25th year for Happy, and, uh, it's the 10th year for their big bicycle ride out of the Rec Park in October. This year, it will be October 4th, 2025. We look for volunteers, we look for riders, we get people coming from Philadelphia, um, Chicago. Uh, we've got people, relatives who come in and they do, uh, rides from fun rides with kids to 12-mile rides, 25-mile rides, and a 40-mile ride actually on October 4th, and we'll celebrate that anniversary. And we just recently, Happy just recently, um, participated by giving, uh, you know, some of the money they've raised to, to the Borough for, for that work on the Gettysburg Interloop, connecting the bicycle trails so that eventually it will go through Gettysburg and provide safe bicycling for, um, visitors as well as residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Butterfield, anything from ACTPO?
As we always do, I have invited Waste Management to come to this room to a meeting, a short meeting, to discuss the materials that they will accept, any changes in policy that's going on. And, um, they're looking at dates for next week, and when we get those dates, I'll pass them on to the staff. And of course, staff members are welcome to, um, come and participate.
Thank you. Mr. Berger, the trail feasibility study?
No developments.
All right. Thank you. All right. Other reports are in our files. Uh, it takes us to elected officials' comments. Mayor Freeling, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, there'll be one more meeting to finalize plans for Memorial Day, the parade and celebration this year. Unfortunately, the USS Gettysburg is at sea, and the USS Eisenhower was not available. Um, continue planning for the Juneteenth celebration. And, um, speaking of Memorial Day, I will be at a ceremony at Lincoln Cemetery on the 25th at 3:00 PM before Memorial Day, and I will be attending a workforce development meeting this week. I think that's about all. Don't wanna take up too much time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
I have one more thing. Uh, we have two events coming up at, uh, the Public Works Building. Um, Robbie, uh, Deborah, do you want to comment on what materials we're collecting, how we're going about that?
Sure, sure. We are doing the, oh, sorry. The, uh, hang on, let me put my paper with my... The Friday event is the shred event, and we're doing the banker's box size. Um, non-residents, it is $4 a box. Residents, it is a free event. Um, Saturday is for Borough residents only, and that's the e-cycle event for computers, um, laptops, uh, printers, um, monitors, and, and computer such equipment.
I am told that staples are allowed to remain on the paper, but no paper clips. But staples are allowed.
Okay.
All right. Any other elected officials' comments? All right. Uh, I did wanna touch briefly on...
Mr. Bales.
I did wanna touch briefly on medicine takeback. Um, we did collect, I believe it was 309 pounds of medication this year, um, which was all safely incinerated by the DEA. Unfortunately, I don't know that we're gonna be able to do this event again. We have been doing it twice a year. Um, it appears that the funding for this may have been cut along with much of the DEA's staffing and prevention budget. So, um, do continue to, uh, please bank up your, uh, old expired medications in case we do five events like this. We do have a drop box here at the Borough Office, which is always available. Um, please don't flush your medications. Please don't put them in your garbage. When we put them in landfills, they end up in wildlife, they end up in our groundwater, they end up in our bodies, they end up in our sewers, so please, uh, dispose of them safely. The, uh, drop box here at the Police Department is accessible whenever the Borough Lobby is open. All right, that takes us to our second public comment section of the evening. This section is not reserved for items appearing on tonight's agenda. Are there people intending to speak at this second section? Show of hands? Nobody? Oh, all right. Is there any public comment? Okay. If that be the case, then we will adjourn to executive session. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.